Good evening and welcome to the Tunnel Belgrade Planning Board Meeting of February 1st, 2024. It is 6:01 and the first item agenda is a call to order and roll call. And tonight we have with us Mr. Richard Baker, we have Mr. Peter Chergen, we have Mr. Nick Sakaroff, we have Mr. Greg Alexander, and our CEO Hans Rasmussen, and myself Sarah Langgett. I will invite the audience to introduce themselves.
Doug Frame from Golden Pond LLC.
Jeff Allen, the Hudson Engineer.
Alex Semenico.
All right, we also have in Zoom, we have Mr. Mike Emmons and Barbara Allen.
Yes.
So yeah, with that, we'll proceed to public comments before we start the meeting.
Apologies.
And I'm sorry, in the roll call, we also have.
Last but not least.
Yes, we have last but not least, Mrs. Penny Morath. So that said, I will move to public comments. Anybody in the audience has something to say before the meeting?
I would just like to at some point, so you can say a few words about our project at some point.
Yeah, once we get going, application, we can do that. Sure. So new business is an application where we have Mr. Doug Frame representing Mike Emmons. The location of this application is 100 Pine Beach Road, map 42 lot 12. And the purpose is shoreline zone and it's gonna be the motion assisting structures and replace with new one, new camp. Right? So that said, I will have the applicant of our session in front of the board.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Sarah. So our team is made up of Jeff Allen, who's our engineer from A Hudson, and Alex Semenico is our architect and all good builder. Mike is the only smart one here. He's in Florida right now. So he's joining us via Zoom and I'd like to just introduce him and I would like to say a few words about the project before we get started.
All right, Mike, you have the floor.
Mike, you're muted.
I'm on it now.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Mike Emmons. I'm here with my wife Katie. We have been very involved in Belgrade for a long time. I've owned a camp on Great Pond for a long time. And I recently purchased and redid the old Tinker House on the main main road in Belgrade. I'm a big fan of the area and we really enjoy spending our time up there. And we have five grandkids down here in Florida that come up here and spend time with us, which is the reason why we're building a bigger camp because we couldn't fit them all in my other camp. So I apologize to you. I know the planning board has spent quite a bit of time on this property before when Jenny had it. But when I looked at Jenny's plans, they were, I'm an old guy and I just, the modern, modern contemporary building that she was looking to build just did not appeal to me. So we, you'll see that what we have tonight is completely different than what Jenny had planned there. And I think much more traditional, in my opinion, fits better with the lake and the town and everything else. So I appreciate your time and if they have any questions, I'll be here for the whole meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Sarah, Jeff's gonna introduce the project.
Sure.
And then if there are any more questions about the design part of it, Alex will chime in. They're both, they've both done a great job on this project, so I'll let Jeff heat it up.
All right. Thank you. As I don't know, many of you remember us here a year or so ago when I came and brought this property first, Mr. Carol. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
And Mrs. Paul, nice to meet you. So this project is just tearing down the existing buildings that are there. And back when we were permitting this a year ago, we had a site visit out there. So that's how I know many of you have been up to the property and seen it. We're doing the same thing now, who did last year, trying to, the house that's there is rundown. It has a barn that's never really completed and another old camp that has been gutted out for years. So I know the neighbors are eager to see something new and fresh to live because what's there is pretty dilapidated, pretty far shamed. So this project aired all that down and rebuilds essentially in the same footprint. There's a small increase in footprint area of the house working further away from the water. But we're also decreasing the impervious area on the site dramatically by several hundreds, several thousand square feet. Site currently has a gravel driveway and, and whatnot. So Mr. Allen's plans on taking out that gravel driveway, just replacing it with a double track road. What he told me is basically people come to camp and they stay there. Basically, they want to come in and pull in and just get off the road. And they're not jostling, going out back and forth a lot. It's basically just staying there. So it doesn't really need a separate parking space. It's just gonna be parking in a row on this double track. And by double track, I mean it's like a couple of feet wide track of gravel, some grass between it, and then another row of gravel. That is just where we're gonna be driving in. So by putting that in and replacing a solid driveway, we're getting huge decrease in amount of impervious area on site and trying to bring that closer to, the ordinance says you can have 20% impervious. Right now on site, it's close to 40% impervious. With this, we're coming down from 40 to about 26. So it's a major change. The building is expanding, I think 140 square feet out of 4, 300, something like that. But there's some discussion about the impervious surface ratio in the back, last page of the application. But what I all first wanted to do was introduce the drawings and Alex did these. This is sort of what's there now. And you can see the Great Pond is out here. Those are drawn to scale in your book. So you have the same thing what I do here. We've got a couple of different color codes. 25 feet back from the lake, this light gray area out here, you can see the existing structures that are there. The darker gray section is the area within 100 feet, structures within 100 feet. And then this light gray area you see around here is the existing parking. The entire lot is only 100 feet deep. So this is all within the 100, 100 foot, or I'm sorry, this is 75 feet. This is all in the shoreline zone because the entire property is 190 feet along this property line. So we're all in the shoreline zone. So what we did first is, is you know, quantify exactly how much we had there. And then Alex went to work, built on those existing foundations. So that the second drawing, which was A02. And it shows, again, the same, same color coding, the light gray is next to where the, within 25 feet of the lake. And it's got the same, same basic shape. And what he's done, Alex has done in this one, is just overlaying the new buildings on top of the old one. So if you see the existing, the darker line around here, that's the new wall or the new grid line in the building. And the other area over here is the new, called a bunkhouse or just a, two additional bedrooms. So you can see we're, exact, on these buildings over here, we're right on where the building was now. We're trying to build exactly, no closer to the lake. We're not changing anything there. We're just adding the architecture on top of that. For this building over here, you can see it's set back about six or eight feet, Alex.
Seven feet.
Seven feet. Okay. Good guess. About seven feet from the lake further. And so then there's a covered walkway between them to make it one structure rather than two. And this is what Jenny was planning to do last year and when you approved that project. So the next sheet I did was here is floor plan. And slightly enlarged, you can see, again, this part of the building is, is all on the existing footprint. There's an existing foundation there for frost wall. And so I think as much as possible, depending upon, he's gonna be able to set it on top of that or.
We're, that's our hope depending on what we get for structural.
Yeah, they still haven't tested to make sure it's sound enough to build something on, but that's their intent. Over here, you can see it's, it's the front of it's set back quite a bit. There's a deck here, right here, that's the existing deck. That's, that's where the existing deck is. But the building itself is set back seven feet. So the other issue that we had last time, and we kind of, kind of had to, and this is the second floor. The main camp is gonna have the second floor with game room, the bunker. This is kind of interesting. There's a sleeping porch. So it's a closed in porch. But it's up with the bedrooms. So on a hot summer night, you go out and sleep, right? You know, they wear the bugs because you'd still be like sleeping outside in a tent and they don't need any air conditioning. Right. Yeah, I mean, it's a nice.
They hope it's a 18 degrees though.
You need screens. Yeah. Yeah. So, but I mean, I think that I'd never seen one of those before. I think it's a great idea. Because, you know, I can imagine five grandkids might like to sleep out outside, quote unquote, on the porch and they have. And there's, you know, a bedroom, a bedroom up there, bathrooms. These are elevation, what the building's gonna look like. I'm glad Alex threw these because I couldn't imagine drawing these. But a couple of things I wanted to point out here. The ordinance says within certain distance from your lake, you can only be so high. And so it usually is like 12 feet or the existing height. So what we've shown here in the red outline is the existing type of building that's there. And again, the only thing that does not line up that's any higher is this house out here, the the bunkhouse, the two bedrooms that are set off to the side, doesn't look like it lines up. But what's happened, when we set it seven feet further back on the property, the ground's higher. So yeah, it's, you're still the same height building you had, it's just set back seven feet. So that's why you can see the roof line here hopes up above the existing roof line. But you see the bottom is also that it's one foot eight higher than what was there before. So it's, but you know, it's just working with the part of the setting back.
Is the building short to get enough, the current slab or would you have to add foundation to that?
There's no slab. It's on steel beams with concrete.
Which also added to the height a little bit, but on the extra, like plank height or anything fast, just because we're trying to reduce that foundation.
We're gonna utilize the same type of construction underneath that building. We're not gonna put a cross wall and a slab in there. This will be less intrusive to the area. So we're gonna utilize the same type of construction.
Cool. Thank you.
And the last page here is just different elevations. And we have a, the end. And sort of a detail of the bunkhouse, whatever you wanna call it, because it's where, where it's been, you can't see it straight on. So the second one just showed that a little bit more detail. So, you know, this is sort of, this is the same sort of thing you did last year, trying to show how with the red lines where the existing building was. We showed how we're trying to, and how we have been able to match what was there or, you know, have a lower roof than that.
Let's, I get some questions.
Right. Mr. Baker, yeah?
In your cover page, your application, whatever, actual application you have, page. I note that if you look at the, in the box at the bottom of the first item, present structure square footage and proposed structure square footage. How can the proposed structure square footage be more than what was there before? Thinking, what I'm thinking here is, you know, with a non-conforming structure, you're allowed 1500 square feet. And if you're more than that, you can't go any higher. And it just doesn't make sense to me that the structure is gonna be larger than that.
Well, the difference, Mr. Baker, in this area of the bunkhouse over here, this, if you can see, I'm looking at sheet A02, A02. The existing structure you can see in red over here, and it has like a porch and stairs to come out the front of it. What we're doing is we've added to the building here, which is as far away from the lake as you can get. It's the, we can extend away from the lake. And that area was at one time driveway. And so we're building on top of the driveway.
But you can't have, but you can't have more square footage when you're building this than what you had when you started within 100 feet of the water because you've already reached the 15, it's already bigger than 1500 square feet. By adding more to it, you're making the structure more non-conforming.
Yeah, 12 feet.
Okay. So you have to, at least in my mind, have to reduce it to get it no larger than what the existing structure was.
Okay, well, the, the other thing I did not mention, there's an existing shed that's over here. We can probably make that change pretty easily.
But that would, that would be essentially equivalent to moving a, a non-conforming structure closer to the water.
Okay, if we lose, well, we lose the shed. The shed is, is within 100 foot. This is 100 foot length right here. We've lost the shed and then originally proposed like a screen porch on the side here. I can see that a little bit. Oh, yeah. On seat A101, this area here was a, was a screened in porch. And that one is, I don't remember the dimensions of.
Screen porch, yeah.
Probably, I think it's eight by 14. Is that the screen porch that's two feet away from the way?
No.
No, that was the one that they got, they got.
Well, let me do some quick math. Eight, 14, the 112. And the shed, I think, was 100 square feet.
Correct.
So if we lost the shed, lost the porch.
Then you're still trading a footprint that's back in the lots.
It's further away.
You're moving it forward. That's footprint, the square footage.
So the shed doesn't really buy us anything out of it all. Okay. So the, they say 112. So 112 would be the, we lost the porch. And Alex, where we just, we.
Is this, is that a factor, the impervious surface we're losing? Is that, doesn't factor into?
No, it's again, that's just, just the structure.
Yeah. And I mean, you added the kitchen, you pushed that wall backwards, how many feet there?
I think 36 inches from the origin.
So if you took that off the screen porch on the front lakeside, that amounts. Cause you're gaining square footage there. Dimensionally, it's a three feet per three feet three. The world we're talking.
I think we're talking 30 square feet we're looking for now. We got rid of the screen porch on the side. So we can take 30 square feet off that deck on the front very easily.
But you, you were also adding that square footage from what was original there. In the red outline. So the idea is what the shore lines and ordinance is looking for is a trade of square footage. This square footage away from the water.
And we don't get it with that. So we take, if we took that screen porch off the side, then 30 square feet.
Yeah, you're right. You, you added that, so you're taking it back.
Right. And then 30 square feet off the deck would get us to the existing number. But we agree.
Which deck are you talking about?
The one on the wall as edge.
I think we'd have to try to save that at all costs because Mr. Emmons really doesn't want to lose any of that deck.
I mean, I think if we took.
I mean, that's actually, yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's existing. It's pretty much nothing. Yeah.
Right. That's, that would be my suggestion.
This one right here.
Right here.
Well, I can.
The one right on the south, I think we're talking about the.
This, this is the.
Yeah.
The little peninsula deck.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're talking about this deck here. They gotta get rid of that deck.
Or part of it.
There's also a storage section that we could take square footage from.
This one's here.
This one, yeah. Getting rid of that.
That's the other option. We could shallow, we could shallow.
This is the worst thing.
Yeah, yeah. It's currently, they're existing.
Oh, on the back side there.
Yeah.
Right. We can, we can just shallow this up, but this is almost 30 feet across.
That's our elevation, right?
That's on a slab there. So that, that would be, be done anyways. But that's probably be able to shallow that up.
So it'll be coming off in here.
Correct. Mike, if you have a preference on that?
Yeah.
Mike?
He's a decision maker.
Are you following, are you following what we're talking about here?
Kind of, sorta.
We're trying to, we, we need to gain 30 square feet. We need to steal the 30 square feet of the building because we're a little bit over what is existing. And we were looking at the little peninsula deck that juts out to the south, southeast, where Alex suggested making the storage area of the back part of the main house a little more shallow to gain that 30 square feet. What would be your preference on that?
Rather take it off the back of the house.
Good.
So we can get, we can change in our application, so our footprint would be less than we do. Yeah, yeah.
I guess some other questions.
Before moving to that. So you guys are saying that cutting off 34 feet will get us in bounds?
And the side, the side porch of the guest house.
Yeah.
And we lose the side porch here and turning off 30 square feet here.
Okay. So it's, it's, they have to add up to 142 square feet.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
So one thing we should do at some point here is to document that on the, on the application.
Yeah.
Just submitted and planned.
Paper.
Yes. Yeah, we'll, we'll.
Yeah, the shed thing is tricky because he's getting rid of the shed. But he's still building, be in the back of the structure. You know what I mean?
While the shed's got nothing to do with it now.
Yeah, I'm like, I didn't. No, no, I know, I know. But he was trying to gain square footage from the shed, putting it in the back. That addition. Yeah.
That's more that real estate forward dealing.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's a shed, but I was just thinking, he's still blowing out the back of the property. He's adding to the back of the property.
He is adding.
Like if he was taking that shed and putting it in the front of the property.
Yeah.
I'd like, you know, but he, it's still going on the back of the property.
But.
Structures.
You're essentially moving something that's non-conforming and taking it closer to the water, which I can't do.
Right.
So this, the, this, we got this on, on the map or drone, drawing footprint A101. We're taking out the porch that is far to the right.
Correct.
That's going out. And that, that, how much is that again?
That was 112.
Four feet. And then we're taking out of the storage in the back of it. We're talking, we're taking out all that storage area, 30 square feet.
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Baker, if you can continue now.
Some of these questions I had, I was there at the site, which was a year ago.
Yeah.
My memory's only good for a month. So the, as I recall, there, there's a foundation underneath the, the barn area, correct?
Yes.
The house itself, is that on post or is that?
A block.
The, the smaller structure that's on the south side?
No, the also main house.
There's, there's a wing that's on the left that's on a granite, kind of a granite foundation, the original structure, which is probably from the 20s, I guess. And then the barn wing, if you will, that goes north, that's on a frost wall and a slab, a deep right hill, a slab that's in a crawl space area. And then the guest house, which is on the far south side, is on cribbing and steel beams.
And I think I know the answer to some of these. I just wanted to double check. The decks on the bunkhouse, so with a small building. The dock, I think it said deck. They're already on the existing building.
That is existing.
Putting something new up.
No, it's all existing.
And the porch that on the main house, that's gonna be no larger than what was already sitting. And you meet, one thing we were throwing a charm around that doesn't exist in the ordinance, but we're probably talking about the same thing in general is impervious versus unvegetated.
I'm using those interchangeably. It's different. I understand the difference. Pretty much the, the, I'm used to calling it impervious because anything gravel has a different stormwater effect than.
Yeah.
You know, if they had a garden here, that would be unvegetated area.
Definitely. Okay.
Not impervious.
Okay, let's see, what else I had to, related to that one. That's why, oh, the driveway. You would, if you didn't do what you're doing with the one track or whatever we want to call it, it would. it would still comply with the ordinance, would it, or not?
It would.
It would, yeah, because, right, the, uh, well, because the lot coverage is so much more, right now, we're close to, uh, forty percent, thirty-nine point eight or something percent lot coverage with unrevegetated area. Uh, by putting in the double-track, uh, driveway, we're able to drop that to to the twenty-three or twenty-six, I can't remember the exact number, but it's, it's a, it's much closer to being compliant.
Less non-conforming, I guess.
Yes, correct.
Same time, I, I have some, and the reason I ask the question is, I, I don't know if I totally agree with the one-track, uh, and kind of reducing entirely the, the, I'm not gonna say entirely, uh, kind of thinking that car's not always gonna drive on that thing there, and the existing owner is only gonna use it a little bit, but what if a new owner comes, uh, but at the same time, that question's moot when it comes to this project, because it's making it better, and whether it makes it entirely one hundred percent non-vegeta- or impervi- impervious, yeah, we'll use that term, uh, it really doesn't matter.
No, and in the future, if you have a new large office and decided that they wanted to have a parking area, you could also do something like, uh, the York Fox Flora Stadium, where they have the turf papers. It's basically a mat you put down, put, grow grass ninety-nine percent of the time, and you park on it. Uh, so that's, that's a possibility, that someone could do something in the future that would not make it more non-conforming.
A look.
And allow them to drive on the lawn.
Back when I was doing this at the DEP, I always told, and maybe they've got new stuff now, different, uh, opinions of some of the department, but when they started putting this in, I used to say, well, we'll give you fifty percent credit. Because, you know, some of it's still cement type stuff, and that, that, then, at one point, they told me, no, no, don't count it at all. And I don't know what the situation is now, but, uh, yeah.
I, I think they don't count it because, um, what would happen, you're, you're right, the, the water would hit the, the framework, whether it's concrete or plastic, or they make it now with plastic. Uh, and it would hit that, but it would immediately run an inch and be into the ground, into a, a pervious surface, the, the grass surface.
Yeah.
So, so the same way they do with solar panels.
Yeah.
You know, the, the water hits the solar panel, runs off into the impervious, or into the pervious metal buffer underneath it now.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll point out something for the, the board and, and for, uh, you guys. Um, as I recall this project last year, one of the reasons you were able to, we, it was a conclusion that we decided, uh, was, uh, you know, there was discussion about whether the bunkhouse was a separate structure or whether it was part of the main house, and we looked at that although it was basically framework, uh, where there, I don't believe there was any floor on it anymore, but the, the.
The string is going up.
Timbers were there.
Yeah.
Uh, so we concluded that, uh, this is all one structure, otherwise we'd be looking at, hey, you've got two structures, this one can be moved back, even if this one over here can't. But when it came joined, we looked at as one structure, so that helped you out a lot. Uh, and, but, uh, the other thing I would point out is you were concerned about, or possibly concerned about the, the new building actually being a foot higher or something, I guess, but if that's attached, and I'm not trying to get you to go back and make your buildings taller, but as I interpret the ordinance, if you've got, if you treat this project or the thing as one building, which is all attached together, the increase in height no longer would apply specifically to the individual.
That's right.
It would be the whole building, so you're going up a foot higher, even though you're moving it back, really isn't making the structure higher, because the big part of the building, over here, that's twenty-five feet or something like that, so, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not trying to, uh, trying to, like you said, I just want to make sure that for future, we, we, you know, if, if that comes up.
That's, that's very helpful to know, is, you know, as long as it is a single structure, um, yeah, because I I didn't understand that one, and that's why I told Alex, you get one story, that's all you get.
That looks nice, I like.
Yeah, well, I, I feel bad now, but that created some design problems. All designs are problems.
I guess that's all I had.
Any other questions?
I think it's covered it.
Hmm?
I think it's covered it.
So, uh, the only question I got, and it's probably redundant, it's more for the record than anything else, so, uh, this building has moved to the most practical step. And the reason why it cannot be moved anymore back is because of the track.
Foundation.
Okay, foundation.
Yeah, there's, there's a foundation there, there's the septic system is right there, um, where the yeah, septic tank is right there, and if you move, well, the property's kind of a pie shape, and so you, you they stuck the, uh, the septic system, leached to help as far as it could look at from the lake, which is, it's good. But, you know, you can't really move the building, you might move it. You know, it's not very far from the existing septic tank. So you couldn't really move the building and the foundations.
Yeah, they're not, they're not picking the building up or adding any foundation. Just remodel it.
Sarah, this was, were you on the board of your?
I, I was, but, uh, I don't remember going to a side visit. I saw that, I don't remember this project at all.
Yeah, we, anyway, well, our conclusions were, and I was gonna ask you about the septic tank, I thought that was pretty close to the building, which is one of the reasons we didn't require them to, to move back, in addition to the fact that there was the concrete foundation there, um, and so, you know, essentially, last year, we approved very much the same project, uh. But we concluded that you know, like I said, early on, we were thinking that the bunkhouse, which is a, you know, smaller, you know, could be moved back, but then when they pointed out that it was attached, uh, it becomes one structure. Then to move the whole thing back, uh, that was impractical.
And any other thing, uh, the permit that prior owner had, we, we do this, that permit was approved, uh, prior to the, uh, new shore, new shore and zoning that would affect in nineteen eighty-nine. Right? Remember that, that?
That was the, the original house.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was built.
Nineteen eighty-nine, the permits were around nineteen eighty, the proof was approved prior to any changes.
Oh, that was that barn.
Oh, the whole thing, the whole thing was approved.
And the, 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 the structure, the main str- uh, the house and bunkhouse, that must have been there prior to nineteen eighty-nine.
Oh, yeah. It's all weird, right, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so.
But, but I think what happened was that, well, maybe it was later, but the, the barn was permitted, if it was permitted, it was not that many years ago, was it?
No, I don't think so, I remember some discussion about that, and Hans found in the record that that didn't.
It was permitted as a garage, but there was another garage that was built there without a permit, that was contentious. And, uh, the one brother had to buy out George, the other brother, to get control of the property and tried to burn it out and be in compliance.
Yeah.
That was all.
It was very confusing for a few weeks.
And I'd like to make a clarification to, um, Richard's statement about the building height and your design, what's allowed. Uh, the building height is the height of the whole structure, but there is an exception to that, is anything within the twenty-five feet of the lake cannot be made higher. It remains to where it is existed, but that is prohibited to expand over that twenty-five foot zone. Okay? Okay. The central wheels turning. Oh, we're gonna lose this screen course, but we're gonna put a balcony on, you know? We'll get it back somewhere else, which is allowed, but not within twenty-five feet of.
All right, so, uh, we have one more question, and it's in, uh, in the conditions of the sewer treatment system, and this is more a curiosity than anything else. In that page in part five, it says, was the treatment tank pumped? It says no. Was the pumping, the tank recommended? Yes. That that is, is there any explanation for that?
They.
That there was a recommendation and was not done?
Yeah, I worked, talked with the, uh, was AJ's septic inspections, uh, there's no electricity on site, so there's no way for him to pump that out. So that's why he did not pump it. Um, I think they're probably gonna check this anyway and make sure that the pump there is, or the, uh.
I think, I think he ended up hooking up a cord, because it's really a little bit more, he did end up running the tank through the, so that the airport went into the, the chambers, but the tank itself just needed to be pumped, because they know the sludge at the bottom.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. So, um, we got, uh, we consider the application order complete?
I think so.
And we, we go to the findings of fact?
If we, we need to vote on completeness?
We, we do that with the, for commercials, we're not, not for this one. Is it? We always get head back and forth, so we, we, for the completion, for the, uh, uh, a commercial development review, we have to vote that the, that the application was complete. But for this one, we just, we have, if we're fine with application, we move on to the findings of fact.
Okay.
Morad, do you have a question, Mr. Morad?
On that same page with the septic.
Yeah.
It says depth of sludge is unsatisfactory, the thickness of scum is unsatisfactory, what do you do about that?
That's why, that's why you speak on, yes.
Oh, that's why I need to.
Prior to use, yeah. Prior to taking it to use.
Gotcha.
And that's just regular maintenance, basically, right? No one mind, rest in peace. Uh, it's just, that's a little maintenance issue.
So we're gonna proceed with the, uh, findings of fact and conclusion of law, and, uh, so this takes some time, just bear with us, but I have to read all of it for the record. So, uh, applicant name is Mr. Michael Edna- Emmons, and the applic- the application address is a hundred line beach road, map forty-two lot twelve. Findings of fact, the applicant's on a date applied for the shoreline permit, demolition of existing structures and replaced with new camp. Uh, the application was presented to the client board on February the first, twenty twenty-four. His findings of facts and conclusion of law were developed in conjunction with consideration of the permanent application, conclusions of law. Based upon the, of, of the application materials, testimony, statements, evidence, documents, and other material, materials submitted uh, to it, and the above finding of fact, the Belgrade planning board finds that the project is under section, uh, fourteen, table one in, in the ordinance, and further makes the following conclusions based on the applicable provisions on section sixteen D of the ordinance. Will maintain safe and healthy conditions by both the, uh, board found this standard was met based on, um.
Public record and admission, submissions.
Public record.
Right, something like that.
And submissions, so P R A S. P R A S, so we're gonna refer to public record and submissions as, as P R A S for now. So we're gonna vote on that. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Sergeant?
Yes.
Mr. Sakara?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And Ms. Serling, get, so it's a five in favor, none opposed. Right, will not result in water pollution, erosion, and sedimentation of, to, of surface waters. By both, the board found this standard was met. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Sergeant?
Yes.
Mr. Sakara?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And Ms. Serling, get is five in favor, none opposed. Will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. By both, the board found this standard was met based on P R A S. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Sergeant?
Yeah.
Mr. Sakara?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And Ms. Serling, this is five in favor, none opposed. Will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. By both, the board found this standard was met based on P R A S. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Sergeant?
Yeah.
Mrs. Sakara?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And Ms. Serling, get, we both five in favor, none opposed. Will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters. By both, the board find was, find this standard was met based on P R A S. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Sergeant?
Yeah.
Mrs. Sakara?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Ms. Serling, get would pay, would in favor too, so it's five in favor, none opposed. Will protect archaeological and historical resources as designated in the comprehensive plan. By both, the board found this standard was met based on P R A S. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Sergeant?
Yeah.
Mrs. Sakara?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And Ms. Serling, get say yes, so it's five in favor, none opposed. Will avoid problems associated with flood, plains, development, and use. By both, the board found this standard was met based on P R A S. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Sergeant?
Yeah.
Mrs. Sakara?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And Ms. Serling, get, uh, vote yes too, so it's five in favor, none opposed. So this one has a, a number of items that we're gonna have to go through, so we're gonna see what items are applicable, and then we're gonna vote at the, at the end. Is in conformance with the provisions of section fifteen land use standards. By both, the board found this standard was met based on evidence in the record and further as follows. So minimum lot size applicable. Principal and, and accessory structure. Principal and accessory structure. Campgrounds, NA. Individual private campsites, NA. Individual private campsites, N A. Commercial and industrial uses, N A. Parking areas, N A. Road and driveways, yes. Signs. N A. Stormwater runoff, yes. Septic waste disposal systems. Yeah, yes. Essential services, N A. Mineral exploration and extraction.
No.
You guys don't got gold, will you?
Will you?
No. That'd be more attractive, actually. Agriculture, N A. Timber harvesting and land management roads, N A. Clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvest harvesting, N A. Hazard trees, torn, damaged trees, or dead tree removal, N A. Exceptions to clearing vegetation removal requirements, N A. Revegetation requirements, N A.
Can I ask you a question? Are you planning to do any? Planting along the water?
There's a, there's a, there's a whole row of beautiful white birches along the shoreline, and they plan to keep everything intact just the way it is.
I, I raise that question because the last time we met, uh, the owner was gonna do some. Low stuff to keep the erosion down or.
Yeah, one, they, they're gonna replace some of the driveway with blueberry solid, and. We're just taking the whole driveway out, so. We're replacing the grass.
So there's gonna be vegetation somehow. So that's a.
Okay.
There's gonna be some re, revegetation somehow. So that's a. Okay? So grass. Grounds is taken off and gravelly, uh, place in. And we'll finish that. Alright. Erosion and sedimentation control. Yes. Shoreline stabilization. No? Soils, N A.
Yeah, there is, you're gonna be doing some excavating as well with the. Uh, putting. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So I should put there that it's gonna be, uh.
Classic.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll follow all the, the erosion control practices. There'll be erosion control mix put along the whole shoreline.
Yeah.
Wrapped around the whole property. So that'll be the first thing that happens.
Okay, water quality. Applicable. Historical and archaeological sites, N A. Resource protection.
No.
N A. So we're ready to vote here, so. In conformance with the provisions of section fifteen. The board found these, the following standards were met. Minimum lot size, principal and accessory structures, road and di- driveways, stormwater runoff. Septic waste disposal system, revegeta- revegetation requirements. Erosion sediment, sedimentation control, soils, and water quality. So by both, the, the board found these standards were met. Based on evidence and record, and record. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Sergeant?
Yeah.
Mr. Zakara?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And Ms. Serling get a vote yes, no, and opposed. So we're getting almost there, Mr. Emmons. Conditions of approval needed to met. Require Belgrade SLS ordinance findings in section sixteen D. So this is the ma- management of a stormwater runoff. So such management of water storm runoff from the new and expanded structure in accordance with section fifteen. Eye of the Belgrade Shoreline Zoning Ordinance and the main D E P. Best management practices as outlined in the conservation practices or homeowners publication. So such measures are to be put in place prior to building use. Note that this standard is a standard condition that applies to all permits unless deemed unnecessary by the prime board. Based on the following rationale, and the rationale is. I need some wording for that. Some language for that. Should we put a, uh. Just because of the excavation, uh, part of things?
You're patient for any soil disturbance, uh.
So I'm gonna, uh, put in to comply. With a, um, protecting the shore, the shoreline from erosion. Alright. So now we got to the big vote here.
Well, we have other conditions, so.
Yeah, we got, they're gonna change a hundred and forty-two square foot to match the.
Resubmit, uh, drawings eliminating a hundred and forty-two square feet. Before part of construction.
The other one is.
Resubmit drawings.
And I'll, I'll addition the application, the change in the application, and we'll submit those drawings before construction.
Deducting a hundred and forty-two square feet.
From the, from the new structure.
Of course, yes, to, to conform with that. Existing structure.
That's not the blueprint?
Yes.
So, uh. Resubmit drawings to C E O, deducting a hundred and forty-two square feet from the proposed structure to match original structure prior to construction.
Yeah. Should we also have the condition that, uh, before occupation of the structure, uh, that the, uh. Recommendations of the septic system inspection be completed?
Mm-hmm. So again, you word that for me again, before.
Before occupation of the dwelling. Recommendations of the septic system inspector be completed, uh, be full. You know, completed, met. You guys okay with that?
We plan to do that immediately anyways, that's totally fine.
I didn't know whether, uh, when I said recommendation, including things like you said something about one of the info pipe is too long. Ought to be reduced, and, uh, so my recommend, my. Condition is a little deeper than just pumping out the tank, yeah.
So the third, uh, condition of approval weeks before occupation of dwelling. Recommendations of sewer system inspection to be completed. Any other condition? You know?
Another one question, Penny raised to me. The. Are we essentially just saying take up whatever number of square feet?
Yeah.
Uh, versus, uh, the.
Where? Where? So, so I will make a note of that then, so it's a hundred and four, a square, a square feet, and we agree. That it's gonna be, uh, the screen porch to the far right?
South side, yeah.
And storage.
And from the storage area on the.
Thirty feet on the east side of the storage.
Is there no malleability once they agree on this? Because I think, I'd like to have a little more time to speak with Mr. Emmons about that in particular. There may be other places that we could take it, put up here and put up there, goes down to compliance.
Okay, the thing, the thing of it is that the board have to have view of that, is that changed?
Does that, will it matter to us?
It's the same, same square footage.
Um, they're submitting in the blueprint that will be.
I don't want that matter, she's.
Could you, could we word it, uh, uh, that, uh, we could actually be approved with the condition that. The hundred and twenty-five square, or hundred, if I come back to the board for review or just for approval?
So why would that be?
Well, it depends where they get it, the hundred and forty, is that?
No big reason, I guess.
Because they're taking it off the back of both. They're taking it off the back.
Hmm.
For God, so. This has no effect.
So no matter from where, no matter from where.
I mean, we now know can't take it off, out of the shed, so it's, it's gonna be the deck or that structure. Right, so it doesn't matter to us where it comes from now, but this part is gonna be part of the structure.
Okay.
Uh, so. Making them come back to us.
Could you, could you say?
After all, the removal of, of the on the back of the building.
We're all set just the way it's working.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter, really.
They have to remove.
It can be, it can be any, any place in the building.
Yeah, as long as it's the same.
They're gonna resubmit plans with that square footage gone.
Yeah.
Right.
So why does it matter?
Where is, I agree.
Oh, that condition they're gonna resubmit?
Yeah, they have to resubmit plans.
Right. Yeah. With the final draft. Or that condition that could be, resubmit the plan to.
To the C E O, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, that's essentially covered.
I don't see where, man, it's glass. It will, it will be delineated very well on the plan, so that if, if it's any different than what we've already suggested.
Yeah.
It will be made very clear on there, on the plan, so you know exactly what was done. There won't be any guessing.
You're fine?
Yeah.
Penny?
Yeah, I'm not voting anyway, I, I just had that question.
Sure. So, uh, now we, we're on for the big vote here. So based on the above findings of fact and conclusion of law on February the first. Twenty twenty-four. While the town of Belgrade Board approved, uh, the shoreline, uh, permit application. Uh. February first, twenty twenty-four. With the, with above conditions and a meeting on. February first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, developed with the weakened findings of fact and conclusion of law on reminding. On remand from the Belgrade Board of Appeals and adopted. These findings on the same date, February. First, twenty twenty-four. So we approve this, and we're gonna vote in on the whole application now.
We have to make a motion to vote?
Uh, I, I, I will to entertain motion for, for approval of the application, so.
I'll make a motion. With, with the conditions.
Okay.
Proposed.
I need a second.
To approve or disapprove?
Approved, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll sorry.
Okay, Craig will second, and we're gonna vote now. So Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Sergeant?
Yeah.
Mr. Zakara?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Ms. Serling get with both five in favor, none opposed, and the application is approved. So congratulations, and, uh. Hands will, uh, made a permit, we're gonna be signing off right now.
You're all.
Are you going to chat comments?
So, but my hand is, it's on the Zoom call, he's not here.
Yeah, busy related.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
I did. I picked up very quick.
Thank you all.
Alright.
Congrats.
Thank you all.
Congratulations, thank you.
I just wanted to say, I know it's a lot of work you all doing, I very much appreciate everybody's time.
No problem, that's all you have for, thanks. Alright.
Every night, yeah, staying long.
Can I say?
Yeah, you too.
So, uh, does anybody wants a five-minute break, or we, we can keep going?
I have a question.
Five-minute break, alright, so, Granny is ready.
Do what other people.
Yeah. So Mrs. Shaw, we're gonna take a quick five-minute break, and we're gonna be right on. Oh. Oh, she's, oh, that's right, she's showing.
I can't hear it, the camera.
She probably have been all around soon as.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, we do, we all have one in your backyard.
I need, I need find it, and I, I didn't know.
Maybe I will. I know where to go.
Well, I thought we did, but I.
What do you look for?
Your family as well.
Uh, very small.
And it's not listed.
There's.
Multi-family, I didn't want to came under shoreline only.
Separate ordnance. Separate ordnance.
Separate ordnance, right.
It's very small. Only about seven feet.
It's not very thick.
There's not a lot to it.
I know I have to look for it, uh. With colors.
And I think what's being proposed is pretty much just eliminating the existing.
No.
Multifamily.
Yeah, well, it makes a lot of sense to me. By the way, thanks for the catch on that, uh. Within twenty-five feet, can't pick it any bigger, I, I missed that.
Yes, that's the sacred ground, it's fifty, twenty-five feet.
Yeah, but if it's all one structure, then you go from the highest, the highest point of the current.
Yeah, but still, you can't expand anything, right, not what was in twenty-five, but, yeah, if it's all one structure, if it's sixty feet here.
Yeah.
You can make it sixty feet all the way.
Right.
If you're back.
But that's what they were doing essentially, they were just raising the lower part higher.
Alright.
Not any higher.
So, uh, Mrs. Shaw, we're taking a, a short five-minute break, and I, I think, uh, we have probably two minutes left.
Yeah, the shoreline zoning ordinance. It says prohibited. Usually it's, has to do with within twenty-five feet of the water. It's, anything's prohibited, extensions. On these structures.
That was the one, when we first started, I had to review and provide a comment to the board. Once. There and.
Well, I tried to see that, I wanted to see the changes that Granny had made, but. And I, I just didn't find it.
Well.
Shows where you change it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But to, to make them on the list, I just couldn't find it. But this? Okay, she failed it. Gosh, that was a period of results.
Seventies.
Hmm, okay, I mean, I can see. Where'd you find it on this?
No, I just stuck it in there because like somebody gave it to me. It wasn't part of my original package.
Uh, I'll just ask him to make me a copy. Hans, would you mind making me a copy of that sometime then?
Yeah, I mean, you're really not gonna need it because there's not much to it and it's, it's getting all thrown out.
Okay.
I'm listening.
Okay.
You have combined two hundred and one more than that we've.
Ordinance that we got now.
I would combine two hundred and one and three with you.
May have written it. It's really.
Anyway.
Yeah.
All rusty and not good. Nineteen seventy-eight. Yes.
So we're ready? So we are moving uh with all business. Uh we're gonna be reviewing uh uh our modifications to our ordinances of the minimum size lot and the multi fa- family unit ordinances uh and uh that to conform and uh comply with this uh new state law of LD two thousand and three. And with that, what I'm gonna do is just to uh start off with uh introducing uh Granny Shaw from KB Clark who have been um helping us with the uh final modifications of our ordinances. And I think what we probably uh refer to do, this is, is the uh document that we most uh work on is to start talking first about the minimum like uh uh lot size ordinance. You have a floor, Mrs. Shaw?
Hey, thank you and thank you for accommodating me via Zoom. I have a sick toddler at home now.
I mean, you have no idea how thrilled we are to have you here with us.
Well, I'm happy to be here and I, I, I will make sure to, to come in person next week. So basically what I did with minimum lot size is, or I'm sorry, min- uh the multifamily is add in all the um definitions that will kind of reference this and then reference the minimum lot size ordinance. These are the state definitions, so we can change them to match subdivision, uh that'll be up to the town. And then any that we just don't think are relevant, such as if they're just not used or we don't think that they would have any place, um we just scratch out of here, that's, that's no problem at all. And then scrolling through. Going through section five is the multi-family dwelling unit housing. We've made quite a bit of changes to this. This one was pretty sparse, so adding a lot more meat to these requirements.
But you, excuse me, you're in the minimum lot size or the multifamily?
Multifamily.
Multifamily. So that is page nine that I'm on. Section five on page nine. So I went through and accepted all the changes that we've made, just to make it clearer, because it does get kind of muddied as we make all these edits. So the lot area has been changed to forty thousand square feet. That is the minimum lot size. It is not one acre. So whenever we find that, we need to make sure to change it back to forty thousand. And then the extra twenty thousand square feet for each bedroom in the building. Then, let's see what else has changed. We need to define the word building. It appears a few times in the multifamily dwelling. So whether we wanna say a, I think somebody suggested a residential structure. That's, that works um dwelling structure, dwelling unit. Any of that works, as long as we're just not leaving it kind of open-ended for building.
Line three and four, was there no building? They weren't.
So.
Brian, what's your preferred uh terminology for building structure?
I'd go dwelling unit. We're already calling it a dwelling unit.
Right. So line three would be no dwelling units shall contain more than eight dwelling units?
That doesn't make sense. Seems like structure would be.
No residential structure. Shall contain.
Each one, yes.
Residential structure.
Which page is this one again?
It's a multifamily.
We'll pass page one. There we go. Thank you.
Okay, so we wanna go with residential structure?
Yes.
Yes, just because the language on three says dwelling unit.
Okay.
Dwelling, it seems a little like some of a, of a residential structure.
And then each, and then we wanna call it a dwelling unit for inside of the residential structure?
Right.
Okay. I will go through and change all those um. I don't know what the standard is for handicapped parking. I'm not sure if that's a town mandate or if that's a state requirement. And then the um the setback from any contamination sources or a risk of contamination sources. Has been added um. So none of that is really that specific to LD two thousand and three. I think those are more just updates that kinda needed to happen that are just doing while we're in here. So, let's see.
Uh Gray, I lost you where you are with the uh parking, wh- which uh.
So number uh, so section five, A five, is minimum of two off-street parking spaces for each dwelling unit.
Was that one, two, three, four, five?
They got you number five, yeah. Thank you.
So. There wasn't a ton in here for LD two thousand and three. It was really just making sure that we weren't uh prohibiting anything. So that's really it. Everything else, I think, tend to be more updates that it seems like needed to happen in general, such as the, the light pollution, vegetative screenings.
What section is that in?
So it's the one, uh section five is number eleven.
Yep, so that was. That was all um criteria for the multifamily dwelling unit housing.
I lost the track on the uh contamination part. What number was that one? Gray. Will you help me with that?
What are you looking for?
Uh, the contamination requirements. I know number four and page uh section seven, there's something about that. But um.
The waste, the. Service waste disposal system is number eight.
Okay, there we go, thank you. So let's go back to number five here. Minimum of two off-street parking spaces for each dwelling unit. Do I want to enforce that?
This is multifamily. This is not the A D U.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So any changes like that, um those are kind of outside the realm of what my assistance for this is. It's kind of like a fine line, but my kind of funding and realm of scope of work is very specific, so I just have to be really careful with that one. And so I mean, for as far as I'm concerned, after we kind of make those little tweaks, that's really it um. Especially considered, there's really not, there's no way to make an ADU into multifamily. Um, it doesn't work like that, so.
Thank you. You're right, this is a lot of.
And now we have a Word version. We have a Microsoft Word version and a PDF.
That one, that one is older than you.
Um, the one, I think, one thing I did is that record of changes, that's something that I, I personally feel is just really important to have. You guys can feel free to delete it or scrap it, it's up to you. I just threw that in there.
Well, it should, it should stay because by looking at it like that, this, it shows right off that this is revision one.
Now, there's the record of changes on the seven.
Oh, you got another one, okay.
I was looking at an older version.
Alright. So that, that was easy, huh?
Yeah, that one was pretty straightforward. Luckily enough. So we wanna dive right into minimum lot size. So pages, page two was pretty straightforward, just kind of some tweaks and very minor edits. Page three. Again, it was very minimal, making sure we didn't um get into any non-conforming law issues and then adding letter F which starts off on page four. Is an accessory dwelling unit is allowed on non-conforming lots provided that the accessory dwelling unit does not further increase the non-conformity.
Where are you? Uh, there will be um.
Section four, F.
Yeah.
Our, our pages aren't numbered, so when you say what page you're on, we don't have that. So section and number will be correct.
Section four.
Yeah, no problem.
Yes, four F.
It is, it is, it is your fourth page N, if you count.
I marked all up, yeah. So on section four, what, what were you changing?
We added letter F to section four um titled accessory dwelling units.
Yes. Was that an addition?
Yes, that's, that's a, a, a big part of the LD two thousand and three is that they are allowed on non-conforming lots.
Penny, on the topic I gave you tonight, it's in red.
Never mind.
Not news?
Well, that's okay.
All right, make that a question to her instead of Penny.
Sure, so uh uh Mr. Shaw, Mr. Baker has a question.
Uh, and maybe I've jumped the gun, but I'm up on section five already. Should I wait?
Go for it.
Uh, it's the uh uh it's part of, just after five A two B. Uh, where the word footprint was added in. Uh, says a code officer may waive setback requirements of this subsection to permit accessory structures of twenty-five square feet or less. Is that five by five or is that twenty-five feet on a square on each side?
It doesn't matter. It's, I think it was put there for a uh, somebody that wanted to build a school bus stop by the road for their kids to stand in.
Okay, so, and so it is twenty-five foot, forty square feet.
Footprint, yeah.
Yeah, not twenty-five on the side. Okay.
My only concern with using the wording of footprint is that, to me, it doesn't take into account um any decks, porches, anything like that, that would be built onto a foundation building. So I don't know if somewhere we want to annotate that, add that in um if the town wants to add a restriction to L um ADUs that they can't have them. There's nothing saying you can't say that. So we just have to be careful with that wording.
Do we have a definition section?
Marking.
Do we have a definition section?
We do. On this one, it's all the way at the end. Um, we can certainly move it up to the beginning if you want. That's up to you guys.
I, I think that will make sense.
Okay. Add footprint to the definition section?
That, the, the, because in the, in the uh, in the one that we just went through, the definitions are at the beginning. So as you're reading the document, you get all the definitions first and then you know what each item means as you go on reading. Is that, that was one of the concerns that uh there was a number that was in the definitions, not as you read the ordinance, you have to read all the way to the back to get that uh uh specific number.
Footprint in this portion of the ordinance doesn't bother me because this is very specific to being near a public street.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no way that you'd have a deck on a twenty-five foot building. So. I'm doing footprint here. Um, as far as moving the definitions, I don't care either way.
You prefer them in the back, right?
No, that's just wherever they've always been, but if you wanna move them, that's fine.
What do you, what do you guys think about that?
I don't think, think it needs any more explanation.
Definition, do you want the definition?
Do you want the definitions in the front of the document or in the back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We would worry that, the back, sorry. Let's see, go.
I'm usually having one in the back.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a generational thing.
So uh maybe then in the, so keep it consistent then in the uh multifamily dwelling you uh ordinance. You have it in the front, you're gonna have probably to move it to the back.
Okay.
Definitions.
So.
And then, can we have like a.
Can I just say one thing? Uh, we're asking this definition section, if every page you have definitions. Say at the head of top definition. If it does help.
I don't know if we.
Gray, the other thing is that on the ordinances, did we ever put like a table of contents to the document?
You can.
That uh, it does something that we, if we decide to do that, we do it on our own and then there's something that you do. We do.
Either.
I think because of the. I think because of the time constraints we have on this, this would be, that would be like a down-the-road project. So we can just get this wrapped up and in front of your, the town's lawyer. And try and take the time to do a table of content.
I can do, I can do a table of contents, I will add that myself. I think you give priority towards reading the ordinance, so they know that at the end of the act, they will have definitions. Right. Thank you, so let's keep going here.
So, moving through going down into B residential use, those have been changed from one acre to forty thousand, because that's what it is, the forty thousand square feet.
Where are, where are?
B, B resident. B one, lot area dimensions.
B one A, the land use standard, we're on two B, is that where you are?
No, section two.
B one A.
Two B. So it would be, you count the pages, it should be authority, one, two, three, the fourth, the fourth page, pen five A.
Just on language.
Resident.
The fifth page.
Land use. Standards.
Fifth page.
Did you cover the fact that on five A, two B, you took off the last sentence? It says, B, the greater of the following dimensions horizontal distance between the closest point of any structure and the near limit of the right-of-way of any public road privately owned road or private way used in common with others, period. Ours says are two feet of distance from center line of travelway for one inch, one foot of structure height, that's been brought off, are not included in your rewrite.
You're in five A, two B?
That's right.
Yeah, and this is on me, because we did edits and you got an old version. So before horizontal distance, it should say twenty-five feet.
Okay.
Between the closest point of structure and the near limit of the right-of-way of any public road. And
If you want to just shoot me that, that wording, I can throw that in here.
Excuse me?
Any, any wording that did kind of get added in this newest version? You can just email it to me and I can put that in if you want.
Yeah, I'll
Now, granted, when we touched the link that you gave us, that gives to the latest version of it, isn't it?
Yep, so that will show, that will show active, the active document, so you would, if you pull it up, you'll see probably G S for my initials. And the most recent one will have all the changes that have been made accepted, so there won't be any of that red and blue lining. It'll just be a more finished version.
So, so where do we leave it with two? Five A, two B, just take that last line off, but it's because it's not in the rewrite.
I'll send it back to her.
So that's, that's what we react. I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
We're going to re, we're going to re-add that sentence, just some different versions. Wires, but we'll add that in and be, it'll be in the finalized version.
So you're going to add it to the revision, thank you, sorry to be a pain.
Oh, no, no, that's what we're, that's the point of this. Okay.
So next, you were on the next page on B residential use, one, B one A.
Yeah, so yeah, going through so our lot area is forty thousand square feet. And then going through our exceptions, making sure those are all in place. And so none of this even still really touches on A D U's, this was just mostly kind of housekeeping type things. The real A D U's kind of get into C when there's multiple dwellings. So, or two undeveloped parcels. Is that what the town wants to do, is to treat an undeveloped parcel as in that growth area, I mean, that's to see you guys are aware that that is permitting the for dwelling units.
Well, do we even have a designated growth area?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
Where is that, where is that described?
So that, that is it mapped. And it is in the twenty thirteen or fourteen comprehensive plan. We are not at that point with the current update. We have not gotten to the, the future land use chapter in that update process, so I don't anticipate those changing with this update. But we will definitely make sure those are very well described.
Comprehensive plan is not an ordinance, so it's just an allowable area for denser occupations and how would the general public know where that is?
No, no, just because it's in the comprehensive plan doesn't mean it's law.
Exactly.
So
I always felt like the evidence. Because that's another gray area where people say, oh, I'm in the growth area.
All right, and so that's, that's designated by the town. So, if we want to, if you, if the planning board and the comp planning committee want to get together, we can definitely refine that and really specify where our growth areas will be. And that would in turn advise this ordinance if, where the parcel is, if it's located in a growth area.
Isn't that zoning?
Pretty much it is, yeah, I think we should put it by Penny's house.
Easy. Well, that's already a problem here.
Because we don't have any, I mean.
It's not really public information, who's got the footprint as a plan, it's not on our website.
Like, like I said, comprehensive plan is a recommendation. It's not any type of authority.
Yeah, it's a plan.
It's a plan.
Yeah, it's a suggestion.
It's a suggestion? But the thing is that when you just go to the voters and they say, going to be an area, you're going to ask where it is. And I'm not sure that anybody's going to like that place next to their home in Belgrade. A growth area. There, there's something that we have to resolve, resolve on this end, granted, I have nothing to do with your work. It's just that.
It does, because I'm updating the comp plan, so.
So, so what, why would you suggest that we, that the planning board goes to the media, the comprehensive plan committee?
Yeah, so I think, so I still have several chapters to go before we even touch future land use. That is probably going to happen this summer. So once we get that chapter updated and once we're, the comp plan committee is willing, is able to meet, I think maybe we can all sit down as a dual meeting and figure out what we want our policies and strategies surrounding the future land use to look at, look like. And that would be reflected in the ordinance and vice versa.
So, let me see if I understood what you said. So, the comprehensive plan is not going to be done till the summer.
Correct, it's about a eighteen-month process and we just started it in October. And we go chapter by chapter.
So it almost feels to me that we put in the cart in front of the horse, just because we're telling this upgraded minimum sized lot, that we're going to have a designated growth area. Assuming that we some, somehow we have that, but we don't know which one it is, and we don't want to knew it, knew about this till the summer, and we are voting on this modified minimum sized lot in June.
Give me one minute and I can pull up the mapping for the growth areas, for the prior comp plan, and that'll give you kind of some idea of what we're looking at.
But there are areas of them allocated, we just don't know all of them.
Yeah, but they're not, well, they're not.
They're not long, that's a part of that is.
I don't think we're going to get a recommendation, take this point. Can we just take that right out?
Yeah, I think, Kevin, reference to comprehensive plan is just muddy in the water if we want to get this.
I agree.
We can adopt this later or adopt that section to it.
Actual land is located in designated, upgraded, comprehensive, deemed consistent by the state not to expire until the town.
Is that something that you're going to share with us, Grant, if we map?
Yep. Let me just, I'm just trying to pull up the right one.
Why, why, I just can't believe it, the wording, the way it is, and then hopefully, and then we can, there are going to be changes factors, we get comprehensive plan in place, they can address it, and so with the time period, maybe a year, a year and a half, hopefully, we don't.
We need to approve this modified version of the minimum size by June.
The ordinance. Yeah, this is a particular one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we approve it, but we're going to have to live with the fact.
You guys, see my screen?
Yeah, because you're screen.
So the yellow and red are going to be our growth areas.
So there's a village, there's a
You got some in North Belgrade, some in the depot and the village.
Yeah, isn't that a channel road right there?
Yep.
The old one says character. So who decided this? And this is all new. And then that's different. And all of that's different. Then just get, and this is all new.
Yes, that's the proposed revisions.
Yeah, and that's all new.
That's referring, that's an older section.
Yeah, but this is all new too.
Where does that come from, what are the?
I'm lost.
This was made by the prior comprehensive planning committee, I believe K V cog made it, because we do, we did the, yeah, the last plan as well. But this was decided on by that comp planning committee and approved by the town and the state.
It was done about three or four years ago anyway, was it?
More than that. More than that, I think so, okay.
This was done in twenty thirteen, the plan was approved in twenty fourteen.
Okay. The growth areas, the red.
And the yellow.
Red and the yellow, so the planning committee delineated between village district and a general development district. I haven't gotten into this chapter yet as far as the update goes, so I can't give you a lot of details on that. But this is what was decided.
So we're having water issues in a lot of those spots.
Yeah, that's almost right with all the dirty waters.
So I don't want to go by that.
That's going to be, mean, we have to have a water district, that whole area.
Yeah, because we're already having a lot of public water put in. And we don't need a growth area where we've got contaminated water, so.
When is the public water being put in?
When is it supposed to be, Barbara Allen, are you still on here?
Starting next year, I believe.
So we're going to, that's going to change L D two thousand three.
Well, as we are today, that's why I'm kind of asking that maybe leave out this growth area verbiage and adopt it at a later point, because right now what we need is A D U ordinance for where we're standing today.
Okay, and then I think we just really need to make sure that the planning board and the comp plan committee kind of have a meeting of the minds to figure this out for this upcoming update.
So Barbara is not muted now.
Sorry, sorry, it took me a while with the screen sharing to figure out how to unmute myself.
Sorry.
That's okay, not your fault, not your fault. Yeah, so we're in the I think, I think there's, there's hope that by the end of the year, the, the water system might be up and running. But it's still in the design phase with D O T. So I, I, I don't think anybody can give a definite answer as to when it's going to be operational.
Okay.
So, not very helpful, I know, but.
Okay, so for, let's get back to the minimum lot size, we'll figure out growth areas and when, when we get there, right now we need to do L D two thousand three, so we want to strike out the comprehen, that's comprehensive planning sentence or leave it in there because it's what's existing.
So, so we're on undeveloped parcels, number two, right?
Yeah, I'm sure you'll let out all of it, we'll go on.
All right, so we can strike out probably the first Roman numeral one because number two is Dolgrate's comprehensive plan is not up to date. Well, that's kind of applicable to where we are right now, right?
Yeah. Well, with three.
Plans are deemed consistent for ten to twelve years, so we are at the ten-year mark.
And as, and as long as we have started the plan, we are, we are good. You have to start, you have to start the update within twelve years of the last one. So we're within, we're within, we're within the legitimate range.
Okay, Barbara, where do you stand on this, because in this designated growth area, there are allowed four dwellings in our designated growth areas all over the area that we have the bad water, do we really want to invite that much trouble at, at one time?
Yeah, probably not, I'm, I you know, as, as someone else said, the, the, the plan is a plan, it's not an ordinance, so it doesn't hold any legal weight as far as you know, it's, it's not zoning. So as far as.
So do we need it in an ordinance if it doesn't hold legal weight, why, why is it here?
Well, that is, the plan is not, the plan does not hold legal weight, the plan is a planning document.
So that, that is a dwelling unit allowance in L D two thousand three, that if it's located within a designated growth area, you're allowed up to four dwelling units per lot. Or if it's served by a public special district or other centrally managed water system. So even if you get rid of the designated growth area and add in public water, you're still up to four.
It's permitted.
Yes.
So it has to be allowed.
Yes, if it meets all your other requirements, which is where we can get a little more creative.
My heart, that position is.
Where, where can we find that map if we wanted to find that on our own?
I'm gonna email it to you, I don't know where in the town archives that would be, I can shoot it to the group, put an email though.
The comprehensive, the hot, uh, Grania, the comprehensive plan is on the town website. On the comprehensive plan committee page. Um, it's on the left hand side, on that, on their left hand side menu, the twenty thirteen plan.
Do you know if that land use map is in there?
I don't know, but, but if it is on, if it is available through the town website, that's where it would be on the comprehensive plan. Um, page, comprehensive planning committee page.
So are you sure it's there or you thinking is there?
That's where the.
It's definitely there, we don't know about the map.
Yeah, if the map is part of the plan, it should be there.
So it should be there, but you don't, you're not seeing.
I'm not, I'm not looking for it right now, um, but it's, it would be under the chapter of growth and development.
So, Grania. Alright, if this is left there, if the parcel located is designated, wrote there Belgrade. The lot owner of record is permitted to have up to four dwelling units now. Does that mean two primaries and two accessories, or how is this gonna be delineated?
And that's where everything gets very strange. It doesn't really specify, just that you have to have an allowance of four units.
We have to have an allowance of four units?
Yes.
Well, I think we should put in the two primaries and two uh accessories, seeing as this is an accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, it's, I found it.
You found it?
Yeah.
So straight in, huh? What, what picture is it? It said seventy-eight?
It's uh.
Oh, is it all the way at the end? Got it, yeah. And, and top says it's all the way.
Yes, one foot, one fifteen.
And so this, this four allowance, guys, it's only if the, if it's an empty lot. Which I don't imagine there would be a lot of in the growth areas that are designated.
Yeah, I guess a third or fourth units may be located within a structure or multiple structures.
Right, it's only on undeveloped parcels.
Very confusing.
We skipped over some other changes that we need to take note of. Do we wanna backtrack a little bit or do you wanna keep going?
So can, can we do this, uh, just so we can, uh, keep rolling on all this question, let's make a big X on that, uh two, one, of our section, uh uh, C, and then we can, we can come back later to talk about that since uh, the problem that we have is that I don't think we have all the uh information to make it a, a reasonable decision over it. We, we have to give some thinking to that. So a- after that too, let's move to number three and go forward from there, if that works for you, Mrs. Shaw.
So you're looking at C two, we'll just come back to the whole undeveloped parcel section?
Let's go, uh, uh, C, let's go to number three and keep going from there.
Okay, so developed parcels, lots with existing housing units already as of July one, twenty twenty-four?
That's right.
Okay.
And, and by the way, Barbara, the uh comprehensive plan is there and the map is in the comprehensive plan, what you said it was.
Right, yeah, I just, I just found it.
Alright, thank you.
So three, um, if there's one existing dwelling unit, up to two may be constructed, one attached, one detached. Or within.
But each one of them, each one of them is gonna need that, uh, two thou- twenty thousand square feet.
No, this is not multifamily. An accessory dwelling unit does not turn a dwelling unit into a multifamily. Because they are subordinate.
Is that, is that the least restrictive we can be, that say if you got a dwelling unit on existing lot? That they can put two more on there, the least, we have to allow that?
You have to allow it, you can get more creative to be more restrictive.
Like?
This seems kind of strange to me, that somebody has a half acre lot. That you can put three dwelling units on.
You can't, you can't, so because if it's a twenty thousand square foot lot, you're already non-conforming to your minimum lot size. So you could add an ADU, but that would make it more non-conforming, which when we said above, that is included in. We go all the way back to our non-conforming lots, the ability to build on. So accessory dwelling, accessory dwelling unit is allowed on non-conforming lots, provided that the accessory dwelling unit does not further increase the non-conformity. I mean that the accessory dwelling unit does not cause further deviation from the dimensional standards excluding lot area.
And you're reading that out of chapter six seventy-two?
No, I'm reading that off our ordinance, four F.
So.
And that is, that is exact wording from the rulemaking. And so if you had a forty thousand square foot lot, which is your minimum lot size, and one dwelling on it, you are allowed to build two. However, all your still, you, all of your setback requirements, your, and these wellhead setbacks that we're gonna be writing. Those are all going to be more restrictive, so if it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit. Are we good with this part?
Yeah.
So one of the big decisions the town does still need to make is how to treat lots that have buildings torn down after July one. Do we treat that as a developed or undeveloped parcel? If you have a lot and after July first, the building on it, the single family home is torn down. How does the town want to proceed with that lot? We can decide, do we wanna treat it as a developed parcel, or do we wanna, where it has your well and sewer already? Or do we wanna treat it as a undeveloped parcel? Knowing that if you treat it as an undeveloped parcel, it would be eligible for four dwelling units.
Treat it as developed.
Well, if it has a well and sewer.
Yeah.
It's already developed.
Okay, so we wanna treat it a lot that becomes empty as a developed?
You know, you said if it has a well or a sewer, well, it is partially developed, which means it is not undeveloped.
What's developed?
We're slicing hairs of what's defined undeveloped, no improvements, developed would be some improvements.
Right, and that's a, that's a designation the state allows us to make for this.
Yeah, so I would say that would be developed.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, remember that right here? Everybody else quiet, so I'm thinking, assuming that everybody agrees with that, so that's good.
But hey, we, we're trying to figure out what else she did.
She.
We're still on developed parcels.
Well, she was just saying that they wanna know if, if you take in a house. Right, she's skipping around.
Yeah, she's skipping, yeah.
Are we done with the developed parcels? I'm sorry, I thought we were.
ADUs, right, next?
So we added in the, obviously, uh, D, ADUs, um going through and adding in all of our water and wastewater, the setbacks for well and, um, septics. And that's number one.
Yeah, uh, Grania, on the uh the changes, you know, outlined version. I know George was talking about, you referenced the plumbing code that allowed the municipalities to be stricter than what the state plumbing code is. And he's right, that that's plumbing code, not sewer code, and I think his concerns were about the subsurface wastewater. So. I just wanted to clarify that, George isn't here to say, you know, we can be more strict with this plumbing. Internal incoming water, not outgoing water.
Yes. Um, so he had recommended doing the wellhead and the, um, the setbacks, is that what the, the board wants to go with?
Uh, where's that?
Those were added into number one.
Is that like section two, one, two, or?
Yes, one, one. And two.
Isn't that what's in the rules?
There's not much in the rulemaking as far as wellhead setback, it's whatever is the state standard. And there were concerns that we, that was not going to be enough to be protecting of wells.
Well, that's what the state standard is, is wastewater disposal system that alerts less than a hundred linear feet from a private well. But then they have variances. And pretty sure the way the subsurface wastewater is written is those variances must be allowed. Because right now, it's no regulation on wells, someone can come put one on the property line and now they just messed up your lot for your development of your home.
Well, when you're on the zone, it's, it's feeling definitive, right? Now, but the minimum lot size?
It's all the same, and when it comes to subsurface wastewater, the rules are the same.
Okay. So. You're saying is what, what they've written here is definitive enough?
We let Phil look at it, I'm pretty sure he's gonna say we have to allow what the state standard is.
Yeah.
Because we cannot make subsurface wastewater more restrictive, and that's what this is doing.
Right, is here?
Yeah. Talking about section three, uh, under D one, three. The setbacks.
Setback, then what you're depending, it should be what the state has.
Yeah. That's what they want you to be, when they, will issue variances. And here doesn't say anything about variances, it just says cannot be, or may not be.
So where are we gonna change here? May the, may the can?
No, you have to allow the variances, that's all.
Okay.
I would just say may not be located. I don't know. Because the site evaluator, they have to create the plan according to this, you know, ten one forty-four CMR. Chapter two forty-one.
Right.
That is the state standard for subsurface wastewater rules, and I don't think we can amend it.
Part of the variance process too, though, um, also depends on how much case pool is going down.
Exactly, how deep the case is going.
Yeah.
So.
So you have to take all that into account.
And, you know, this, the site evaluators are certified and licensed by the state, and it's not an easy certification to get. So they really are professionals, and I'm ninety eighty percent sure that we cannot amend what the state's subsurface wastewater rules are.
Yeah, I think you're correct, yeah.
I mean, two percent of me is just, there's always doubt. But I don't think that this is, would stand.
This language in number three doesn't provide for the opportunity of variance.
Exactly.
Pardon me?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, and so that makes it more restrictive.
I mean, two says it all, three is not, not as accurate.
Yeah, two says it all.
Right. Just getting rid of three?
Yeah. We cannot amend a state rule.
So we, we are taking out number three, uh. Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Now, uh, was, was that one of Mr. Seale's suggestions?
It was.
I cannot see that, so. I wonder where he, where he, he got that information from.
I think he misinterpreted the statute that says we can become more restrictive on plumbing codes.
Okay.
And that refer, references the international plumbing code, which is internal plumbing, incoming water, not discharge.
Discharge, please.
I've got a copy of it here if you'd like to read it.
What are you reading? Thank you so very much. Thank you.
So are we good with what is now three and four under? D one?
So, I, I'm sorry, I gotta, I just gotta fix this in my head, so this is what he was referencing?
It was.
Okay, but here, the, the, uh, the title is different, the, the, the one is, is thirty-eight four thousand and two two one, so that one is, is, uh, referring to Suresh. And he used, he used the plumbing one.
Yes.
Okay, got you, thank you, appreciate it. You can keep going, Grania.
So number two, ADUs are to be permitted wherever single family dwelling units are allowed. There was an addition about a designated growth area, I did take that out, um, because they are just allowed.
Allowed, Terry, thank you.
Thank you.
And so there was another question, so I, I'm sorry, I can't, there's no way to know who leaves comments on this document, everything is guest user. So I'm not trying to be vague, but someone said, um that the allowance of dwelling units is appropriate and should apply to a critical resource conservation district. that the allowance of dwelling units is appropriate and should apply to a critical resource conservation district. Especially in the non-shorland zoning areas in the map. If housing is not allowed, the ADUs are not allowed.
Yes, I agree.
If we, if you guys want, we can really kind of specify that under number two. That.
Um. Did we say that again?
About the?
Would somebody typed in there about a conservation area?
Yeah, so there was a comment about the critical resource conservation district in the non-shorland zoning areas of the town as indicated in the comp plan. That includes IF&amp;W lands, land trust, wetlands, et cetera. So if there is no, if single-family dwellings are not allowed on the property, then ADUs are not allowed, and that is what number two is saying.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
I don't know if we need any more clarification on that, or if we need to go into any more detail on that.
No, I think you can't have an ADU without a primary, so if you can't build a primary, you can't make an ADU.
That's, that's like such the key part of this, it's accessory. So without a primary, you can't have an accessory.
Exactly. Thank you for the clarification.
There's someplace here that excludes the shoreline zone, right?
Oh, yeah. Lot several places.
Yeah, so shoreline zoning trumps housing.
Yeah, okay.
Well, can, can I add a comment to this? Adding, adding that redundancy that you mentioned. I will feel, you, I will feel that none, you think we're confusing?
Yep.
Okay, well, I, to me, must be the different, uh, political background, to me, it's, uh, it drills the same point from a different way, and, uh, uh, I just concern people down the road, how they're gonna take it, but, uh, I, I see a lot of places here that the one single sentence is enough.
It's, I, I mean, I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, sounds good, let's get going.
Um, the numbers after that are straight out of the rulemaking. That's not anything that we can change. So like number six, ADU must adhere to all setback and dimensional requirements, that stays the same. Number seven.
Do we put a maximum size in there?
Yes, we are gonna do a thousand square feet, I believe was the number we came up with.
We being who?
The planning board. That is in here somewhere, I just don't think we've gotten there yet.
I've only found that in the definitions, that's why I would like it to be added into this body of the ordinance somewhere.
Okay. Uh, number seven. The accessory dwelling unit must be at least one hundred ninety square feet in floor area. Again, floor area is not gonna take into account any decks, porches, pergolas, whatever you wanna build on the side of it.
Okay, and we can't go with a thousand square feet, it's gotta be a thousand eight square feet. If we're gonna put anything like that in there.
Why not?
Because twenty-eight by thirty-six. I mean, a thousand eight, so you want?
Four by, she, is that what you think?
Well, you have to go by buildable numbers.
Yeah, okay.
You don't build twenty-seven by thirty-six. That's just that's not right.
You haven't built one, brother, have you?
So twenty-eight by thirty-six is a normal-sized house, it's a normal-dimensioned house, and it comes to a thousand eight square feet. So if we're gonna pin a number at a thousand square feet, it needs to be a thousand and eight square feet.
Okay, that'd be reasonable.
Okay, one thousand eight square feet?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay. And we're good with floor area?
Okay.
That is most, we can do.
Black as a max.
So now is when we can kind of make our more creative additions, um, be as restrictive or leave it at this, it really kind of depends on what the planning board wants to do. If you want to allow more freedom to build, then we can add less, if you would like to not have as many potentially pop up, then we can add more, um. So we can regulate the appearance of an ADU. Who can live in an ADU, how long it can be rented for, if it can have a full kitchen, laundry, bathroom facilities. All of that is up to the town's discretion to regulate. Keeping in mind that that would kind of fall on you, Hans, to be enforceable.
Yeah, exactly, I don't see how we can say who can live in there, because, you know, we're not, we don't have a police force. And, uh, I don't have DNA kits to see if somebody's family or not.
I would refer you to the town of Baldwin, who has decided that that is what they are going to go with. Um, it has to be within three family members, I think is how they're putting it.
That's good for them.
Yeah.
Yep.
I, I, I mean, me personally, I would lean towards less restrictive, because every single plan has to come before us anyways, individually, you know, so if we, at least that leaves.
That's right, and then what's about the next generation, this property gets sold, somebody else buys it. They're not aware of all the restrictions that were put on it when ADU was granted, and you know, let's be realistic.
No, Jerry, you're in the town of Baldwin, Baldwin located anyway.
Yeah, it's out, it's out by Freiberg.
Freiberg, okay, I can.
Now, what is, you know, how population?
Not many.
Not many.
The town can establish an application permitting process for ADUs that would be separate from a regular dwelling unit. Uh, that might be something you wanna look into, um, but again, those are all kind of just different options.
So, Granya, where are you, are we nine, or what are we, what section are we in right now?
Um, I'm still in D, but kind of all, all of these numbers are
so.
From the rulemaking and not really subject to change.
So you're talking about possibly doing a twelve, thirteen, and fourteen by adding in new rules, okay?
Yep, any, any thing that we wanna add in would kind of go in this area.
Number ten should say as long as they accept three dwellings, just a typo.
Oh, yep. Thank you.
So Hans, I take it you're probably not a, a fan of, uh, saying you have to have a, has to be a, uh, land owned by the landowner.
Or occupied.
Occupied.
No, cuz how many people here are snowbirds, you know, if they go south and want somebody to live in their house during, while they're gone and take care of it for them? Is that family? Is that rental? I mean, what, where does it classify?
I was thinking more in terms of the ADU, not the main house.
Well, either way, I mean, the property is a property.
It's the house.
Yeah, it's their property, they're paying the taxes, they should, if this is allowed, they should be able to do what they want within what's allowed.
What I don't get with that is, uh, what difference if it's their family members or three other, three of their family members, but three other people uh, living there? It all has the same effect over time.
Yeah. Yeah, probably doesn't, I'm just showing my bias, I'm not a big fan of law.
Well, and to Craig's point, all right, there's three family members, all right, there's gonna be more respect for the property than if it's just three people from Massachusetts.
Yeah.
Let's take on either.
Granya, number six.
I, I, I've been.
Granya. Like Tanya with a gur.
My name is Granya. Granya? Granya, yes.
Yep, not a food group.
Number six needs to have D requirements outlined, just to be real smart, so I don't need to be oh, again. Insections.
So, somebody had asked a question about RVs. So. About if an RV can be a ADU, an ADU.
Requirements outlined.
It's a typo, she's pointing out a typo.
Yes. I changed that, um, I was moving on to a, a comment that was made about can an RV or otherwise motorized vehicle be an ADU? Again, there's nothing prohibiting that, but there's nothing allowing that either, so the town can decide that, if you wanna specify, then ADU cannot be on a chassis. Um, it must be a permanently affixed and winterized. We have the, the freedom to do so, it's up to the town.
I say we do that, cuz RVs are rich for motor vehicles, and they can't go through a seasonal conversion unless they're mounted, permanently have skirting, and attached to a permanent subsurface wastewater. Then the town can tax it. But if it's a motor vehicle, it can go somewhere else, and it's not truly an ADU. It's a visiting most of the grid walls.
No, I wouldn't be in favor of, uh, having an RV via ADU.
No. No one that RVs.
All right, so we have, we have to spell that in the elements. Is that something that you're typing out, will you type out then?
So an ADU must be permanently affixed and winterized.
Good, thank you.
I don't know if there's any sort of standards that we wanna throw in there, um.
Oh, I would just say complying with the subsurface wastewater, you know, if it's a portable holding tank, it is not complying with subsurface wastewater. Holding tanks, even if they're in the ground, permanently do not meet seasonal conversions. And we're not talking about seasonal ADU, this is even supposed to be permanent ADUs.
So that would wrap up that section, if we wanna move on to E.
What, what did you add?
No, was this an add, wasn't in that, there's a comment.
It'll be in the next version.
It'll be in the next one.
Yeah, I'm making any changes that we're making, I'm putting on the live document, so when you go in, you will see that, that those have been made. So not a lot changed in the affordable housing development. So I think we'll have to scratch out to C, that's the same wording that we took out of E, D, sorry. The wastewater disposal systems may not be located less than one hundred linear feet from a private well. Want me to scratch that out?
Yeah, I guess on, uh, B, the last two words as amended, we could lose a bit lost here.
Over in, in the E three?
Yep. That, that kind of goes back to our growth area. So I'll make another note. So it's three, four, um. Not much has changed, that's all. Those are all, um, standards that are in place. Um, main housing. So there was a question on six. E six, about off-street parking, um. About and so it, it does conflict a little bit. Um, but this is very specific to an affordable housing as opposed to just a multifamily.
Is number six part of some state rule?
I'm not sure. Does Belgrade have any affordable housing developments?
Nope.
Okay.
So what was that, Dave's apartment complex, there is one for the housing. Um, just past the general road. General Road.
Is it?
Yeah. Yeah, that's state-funded. Affordable housing there, isn't it?
I have no idea, but I know that apartments here.
Not existing, that's not known, but I'm not sure if it's considered affordable housing or not. Do you know? Used to be Dave's Apartments, right there past the Channel Road on the right.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
It's, I never, I have really no idea, I know that.
Down the corner, sort of, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right off Route twenty-three?
Yeah, twenty-seven.
Okay, sorry. I don't think it's affordable, I don't, I don't think.
I've never been there, so honestly, I've been there for twenty-five years, never been, never visited.
Right, and what constitutes affordable housing, is it rent controlled, or is it the state subsidized housing, or? What are we talking about?
It's designated affordable if it's at or for renting at or below eighty percent of the local area median income. Um, for owner, it's at or below a hundred twenty percent. So it doesn't, it's not specified that for state aid, that's that, um, the voucher program. So you can be affordable without being state afforded.
So that would be a voluntary landlord-type thing, then?
Yeah, that would be if the landlord wants to charge, like, just very, very low rent. It would be considered affordable.
Well, that property exists, so. I guess we can leave it there for if somebody wants to create a affordable housing, we have it. There's a determination. Yeah, if somebody else's land, they wanna develop it as they wish, we can't say no, I mean, which is American.
Okay, I'm gonna skip right over F, because this has nothing to do with housing. Going to G, commercial use. So what we added is G two, structures accessory to commercial use, accessory structure shall be permitted on a lot used for commercial purposes.
That's an accessory structure, not an accessory dwelling unit?
Correct.
Okay.
Um. If it's and again, because you don't have zoning, if it, it doesn't really preclude anything. Um. I don't know for H. I other land uses would just be anything that's not residential, commercial. It could be agriculture. Um. Kind of anything you can think of for land uses.
Change, you changed there. The old one said five B, five C, or five D. The new one says sections five B through G above.
What part are you in?
And then you said, and then the wording has changed from what we had, except that stage one, a lot size law applies on a subsurface wastewater disposal system is required. The old one said, except that a lot to be subject to any land use require and subsurface wastewater disposal shall meet the state minimum lot size law. So that was a change.
Is that six? I'm not sure where you are.
H one, I believe.
H one.
Area and dimensions. Number one.
Right, so B and G changed because we added in the accessory dwelling unit. So they just didn't line up. So that's why that was changed.
Here you just changed the wording. And, and it's in the same place, right? Area and dimension.
Yeah, so that didn't change. It's just because we added that section for accessory dwelling units.
On one time.
No, it's other land use. Other land use of area and dimensions.
Yeah, but she's saying she had, she changed it because she added number, uh, four on the previous one.
Number four on land?
Uh, the, the previous accessory structures she had on, uh, on F, F four. Correct?
Right, so it said like sections A, B, C, D, but we added in between C and D.
Right.
So we needed to just B through G.
Private campsite, but we're talking about other land uses now. And it's it's there too. It's number one on the, on the land uses and it, but it's changed wording.
I should accommodate what they added in the prior track, in the prior section. The language changed to accommodate the, the addition on the prior section.
Was the prior section, four commercially?
F four, F four.
Uh.
F four was not in the original.
You're talking four accessory structures?
That was added, yeah. Because that was added, the language changes on H. Number one, she's adding.
Why is it changed?
Because they added.
For all that. One, two accessory structures, they have permitted on a lot having principal use as an individual private campsite. That's our reading. Am I in?
We skipped campsite one, we're in. We're on H. H. For the next page.
F, G, H? Yeah, or H. Area and dimensions, that's where I pinned that. So they're saying that, right of that?
Yeah, that, that's one case.
H one had to change, had to change to accommodate more sections. We just kind of expanded it. That's it.
This one has to be the six, this number four, that we don't have four.
Yeah.
That was added.
All right.
And because that was added, this number one on H has to be changed. The language has to be changed to reflect the addition of four.
Because?
Yeah.
I don't follow. You follow that logic?
I don't.
That's all right. Just keep moving on.
I don't need it, but anyway, let's go with it.
Okay.
We're, we're good, uh, right here.
Okay, um. So those are really the big changes all through there, um, in that section unless we have any more questions. I want to go down to number six, administration.
Um, under permit, permit application, you've got a whole new section under three.
So I, I did not put that in there. Um. That was, that was a, a, somebody else in the guest user.
So when he's forced to adoption or leave it out or?
That's, uh, that's your choice. Um, I'm not sure who put that in there.
No, the, you know, I think the only person that did direct changes to the the document was Mr. Seal.
See, um. He demonstrated the strength of the order.
So what's different? And what was added?
Yeah, which, what, what was added?
So if a property is not, except is provided in section five F, individual campsites and section five H, other land uses of this ordinance. If a property is not served by a public sewer and the proposed structure or structures is, or change in land use require provision for disposal of wastewater. The applicant shall submit as part of the application for permit a valid plumbing permit issued by the local plumbing inspector or a completed application for a plumbing permit. The complete application shall include the site evaluation approved by the LPI, meeting all the requirements of the state Department of Human Services for the proposed land use. If it is determined by the LPI that a subsurface wastewater disposal system is not required, a written statement from the LPI that no plumbing permit is required shall be included.
But where? Yes. Okay, next page. Thank you.
So this is once been added by somebody else?
The red. She just read this little C part, but the red is.
Is it likely that's George's input?
Yeah. I think George is the only one that actually gave any vision.
Is there anything in that sentence that?
What she just read is good, but what she just read is the little C section, which
Yeah.
Whatever, I don't like C, but my concern is the section, the four, which is in red, but
We'll straighten the branch. Water supply well.
That's added as well, number four?
Yes, that was an addition.
Who's going to force that?
So that, that is saying that unless the owner of the ADU or affordable housing project, they need to submit these laboratory tests to receive um, uh, allowance to occupy the, the dwelling.
All right. One thing I do want to change is there is right after CEO, it says prior to occupation, it'd be prior to permit.
Okay.
Hmm.
Okay, because this is under permitting?
Yes.
Let's not let them build a horse and then say, well, tell them we can't live in it, you know? Um, the rest of this looks like it comes from states rental requirements landlord, like even for like Airbnbs, they're supposed to have their drinking water tested every year and submit test results to the Verbo or whoever. So that looks kind of standard. But I believe, again, Phil would have to look at it and make sure it's.
Hmm.
I'm not, I'm not sure the league, I don't. This is not really something in my realm, but I'm not sure if you're allowed to require people to test their water.
It is, you can if they're renting it. This is part of the state's rental requirements.
Right, but for an ADU or?
So if you're not renting it, you're just letting somebody live there?
Right.
Well, it says affordable housing, right?
This is not affordable how, this is, yes, it's not in the affordable housing section, but it would apply. Um.
Ooh, so I think maybe we said, uh, I think we need to put it in compliance to rental standards, but because you're right, if it is somebody just building a house.
Yeah, you can't tell.
You don't want, right?
But if it, if it, if it's affordable housing, then it's by definition, rent isn't it, correct?
Yeah.
So then it would, it would seem as it would maybe apply to that.
Because I know most wells in Belgrade all have fluoride, fluoride, iron, uh, magnesium, uranium down in the village is full of uranium, arsenic, and almost every well in the town has a. So now we're gonna say. But you see that?
Yeah.
So what do you think? For the next one?
I think the, the key is not whether you have it, how much you have.
Right.
It's what, you know, you
Right.
You can have it. It might be minor quantities or uh, somebody wants to rent out to somebody. I would think you want to make sure that it wasn't hazardous water to drink in.
Well, then it should include rentals, the word rental in it somewhere. Can't throw well residents and rental.
No, that's what I said, not, not resident. I, I, I thought, I thought this was pertaining to, uh, affordable housing, which I, I thought so is rental.
The, that the first words, you want to change it, um, or rental properties? Instead of to demonstrate rental properties?
Yeah.
Must demonstrate something or?
No.
Yeah, take out accessory dwelling. Right?
So this, this really, uh, application is applying to ADUs, right?
Right, yeah.
So the, the, the part that I see, uh, the red going in, even when our wells personally are, are good is we don't know how they're gonna be down the road with everybody start building these things around.
Yeah, I don't think you can put that into people's homes, people that live there. Rental may be, but.
I may be off base with the same paragraph that says accessory dwelling, you know, affordable housing. I see it as limited only to those two things, not some of his residents.
Yeah.
Wrong accessory house dwelling unit.
This is what they are.
Right. But that could be sometimes.
Doesn't have to be rental, it'd be for your mother-in-law.
Right, could be, yeah. That's why I'm saying I would strike out accessory dwelling unit, maybe, you know, affordable housing.
Because the accessory dwelling unit isn't necessarily rental property.
It's not necessarily.
Or it could be your mother-in-law, could be caregiver you want near you, they're not even paying rent, there's.
You don't poison your mother-in-law, don't bother testing.
So you're saying that, that you cannot require testing for uh, homeownership?
Right.
But so that, that's, that's unlawful then, what you're saying?
Because I, if you, if you're renting something, like say it's an Airbnb, like you said, you, you know, somebody's renting an Airbnb, they want to go in there with confidence that the drinking water is clean and pot, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And they're not gonna go in there and have the water tested for a weekend at the standard. So I can understand requiring units that are strictly for, for rental property to, you know.
But I guess what I'm trying to say is that if we're gonna have ADUs and we, we're building this old ADUs next to each other. So when I, I'm gonna put a new one in my house and everybody else around has ADUs, but not me. I want to ensure that my water is fine.
Oh, yeah, that's your right to do that.
Regardless.
Uh, I just have a problem with there being an accessory dwelling unit because that could be someone that you're not rent to on your property.
It wouldn't matter as long as you do the accessory dwelling. So you have to check it out, even when it's for you.
Well, sure, you have to check it out, but.
It doesn't have anything for you.
Yeah.
Does sell for you.
Right.
Doesn't protect you at all.
Well, it, it does in the sense that if, let's say I'm doing that for my mother-in-law and I'm building that and I, all these people are building around me, the same stuff. I would rather check that the water that we're gonna have.
On your property, go for it.
Yeah, that's your option, the luxury.
It's not respecting you from doing that.
We want to reference the state rental law, the rules that we can reference that, but to put it in here arbitrarily is
Yeah.
Not really.
I don't follow that, that, uh, that, I, I just, I, I don't know, I'm thinking that.
So if someone's down two properties or admits property to you.
Okay.
They don't test the male water, it's nothing to do with your water. Doesn't protect you, I mean.
But it, but probably the point is not protecting the neighbors, it's protecting yourself.
Right, so we're gonna tell people how to protect themselves? We're gonna tell, lead them along?
I thought the problem was that then people with this, uh, extra units. So we're looking after the public safety into it.
We're just talking about language, adding language that testing is required.
Yeah.
But I, I don't think you can require testing to someone's house. They can do that. Everybody can, has the right to do that, but in order that, you can't tell somebody, you, you can't get a permit if you don't test your water. I mean, couldn't somebody still build even if they had bad water, they could?
Yeah, this part of bill.
Still build, but fill this and they can still build. You can't tell someone they can't build because their waters are not clean.
So, I mean, most builders don't even test water.
I know, I know, that's what I'm saying. That's why adding, adding in is.
Let's strike this.
Yeah. We shouldn't add.
All right.
So do you want to say that if a?
I agree though, if, if you, if you, if you have an Airbnb, like you should have to, ha, it should be required to have your water tested. But I mean, how many times do they have to have tested just to get the permit one time and then that's it? And I mean.
No, they, every year they better.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
I, I don't be a.
Because it gotta be in their Airbnb or the verbal license and that's part of the application.
That I agree with, that I agree with. I mean, you want to, you get an Airbnb, you want to make sure you go in there with confidence that it's clean water, cooking with it, you're drinking with it or whatever.
I, I'm not following the, the logic here. Maybe you can say I'm just getting too late, but can, can, can because Mr. Seal was the one that put this. Can we ask him what his reasoning is? Is that?
Yeah, I can just highlight it and say, well, discuss this next week.
Okay, can we do that, please? Thank you.
And Ryan, I found two more things I'd like to change.
Okay.
Uh, and under C, additional dwelling units on one lot. One waste, water, wastewater.
Where are you? Sorry.
Okay, um. B, residential use. Um. One. Two, or I guess it's C, additional dwellings on one lot.
Okay, hold on.
So C one is wastewater, wastewater.
What, what number is the first number? Six, seven, eight? What page is it on?
I don't have page numbers.
It'll be page six, C, additional dwellings on one lot.
Yes. Uh, one. End of the first paragraph, it says issuance of a certificate of occupancy uh, that should be permit. Because it's too late, they've already built everything.
Okay.
And the same, the next page, uh, two pages, D, accessory dwelling units. Same terminology. Same.
Hmm.
Instead of certificate of occupancy.
Be a permit.
Prior to issuance of a permit or building permit or?
Okay.
We should say building permit, right, rather than?
Yeah, instead of certificate of occupancy. So before it's even approved, they got approved that they have had it.
Yeah, they say building permit rather than just permit.
Oh, right now it says certificate of occupancy.
I know, but it should say building permit.
Yes, yeah, building permit, yeah. Yeah, yeah, building permit, yeah.
So after that, then that just then I goes into the definitions after um. The. D.
Procedure for administering permit.
Um. So D, procedure for administering permits, the only thing that's changed, there was added. Adequately protects the potability of private and public drinking water supply wells on the project parcel and those on abutting parcels.
Yeah, under procedures for administering permits, you made some changes, you don't, you, I'm skipping over those.
No, I'm in procedure for administering permits.
I'm sorry?
I'm in D, administer, procedure for administering permits.
Okay. Where you added um to two, number two.
Yeah, she just went, that's why she just went over.
Okay.
So after two, there's been something added, adequately protects the potability of private and public drinking water supply wells on the project parcel and those on abutting parcels.
Yeah.
Will be with that?
Yeah.
So that would be number three, so three would be four and you'd have eight there, right?
So, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Do you remember that, Grania?
No.
So, so what we have in that place, D, procedure for administrative permits. We have one, then two, and then three, so three is gonna become four.
Oh, yeah, the numbering's gonna change.
Yeah, and then we have it on the next page, it goes to eight.
So in number, the existing number three. Not have an adverse effect on areas of land. That last portion where it's or designated as a resource protection area. That is different language, that is what in the comp, the what's in the comp plan, what's in the comp plan has a resource. Is a. Critical resource conservation district. As opposed to a resource protection area.
Which uh.
So that's just a a difference in wording.
But that's now number four.
It covers resource protection and children, I guess, which.
Well, critical resource protection, wouldn't that be like a vernal pool?
Uh.
So critical resource protection is what is. Characterized in the existing comp plan. Um. I don't, I'm, I don't know the language that beginning with habitat uses off the top of my head. But vernal pools are a a critical or a protected resource.
Yeah, and but isn't like the winter bedding areas and your.
Yeah, deer wintering areas, vernal pools. Endangered. Plants and stuff.
So, Grania. Uh we are approaching nine o'clock.
Mm-hmm.
And we have some people have to. Early work um schedules, can we stop here?
Sure, but yeah, I'll I'll put a little note that we stopped here and we'll pick it back up.
Yeah.
Um. Before we stop, stop, definitions. It's the only place on this that I saw the thousand four feet, which needs to be thousand eight, right?
Yeah.
And you put the same verbiage back in the document. Where it talks about dimensions. Or.
Um.
I jumped the definition of accessory dwelling unit.
Yes, and so that'll be back to one thousand eight.
Yeah. Alright, thank you.
Alright, I, um we have the plan where I really want to thank you, Grania. And.
You're welcome, thank you guys.
And I read quite super today.
Thought you were gonna get off easy today, no?
Not quite. I've had a few meetings with the town of Belgrade so far. I got your number.
Alright, so you can go minutes.
Um. Okay, uh you wanna do that?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys, I'll see you next week.
See you next week, thank you so much.
I think we should do the mention of the last meeting.
Okay, so next uh item agenda is a few minutes of. January the uh fourth and January the eighteenth.
When, um. Before we meet the next time, I will print off the rental rules.
Hmm.
We have clarity.
Hmm.
Of what's included with that.
Thank you.
How close we might want to get it in for our audience.
Ready? So any changes to the minutes of January the fourth?
Uh, I just had one question. Um, no.
I almost said, can I?
That was that the first meeting that we had with the president of Belgrade?
It's just the second.
Second.
Okay, I wasn't there, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. I'm good.
Um. So uh, I wanted to the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve that into January fourth.
Alright, I got a second. Mr. Baker, second, so let's go on this one, Mr. Baker.
Uh, yes.
Mr. uh Sergeant.
Yes.
Mr. Sakara.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
And Mr. Ranga, we uh five. Uh in favor, no opposed, and approving the minutes of January the fourth. But about January the eighteenth.
Appreciate, oh, no question, yeah. Uh, I was a. I need to, I was here for that particular meeting, we're calling for.
Yeah.
Yeah, you were here. So we're gonna add that. So we're gonna add uh Chelsea, uh Kelsey to uh. To the board members present, we gotta add uh Mr. Surgeon, Peter Surgeon. So any other changes? Alright, so um, I wanted to, I wanted to talk through the minutes.
Make the motion, we approve the minutes, as amended.
As amended.
Peter's name.
I seconded that.
I seconded, uh Mr. Sakara will second it, so Mr. Baker.
Uh, yes.
Uh, Mr. Sergeant, oh, you can get no vote, you were not here. On that one, alright.
Yeah.
On the eighteen.
No, he was, he wasn't, he was.
I I got your vote on the first one, so uh, I. Mr. Sergeant.
Yes.
Mrs. Sakara.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander, and Mr. Ranga, it was five, just no opposed. Okay? So the minutes of uh January eighteenth are approved. And next item in the agenda is uh CEO. Uh update. And uh we're good with that, and uh. And so I also uh give a a motion to adjourn.
Uh you mentioned both that we adjourned the meeting.
Okay, who seconded? Mr. Baker seconded, so Mr. Baker.
No.
Mr. Sergeant.
Yes.
Mr. Sakara.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
And Mr. Ranga, we approve it and we are closing the meeting today.
Take a dive, hope you enjoy the show.